We're gonna make it happen, so I'm gonna turn this over to Power 105, M-Eazy, so he can have a word.
Well, good morning, everybody, good morning, good morning. Uh, this is my first time participating in this, in this program. Um, I'm a newly father, so this is something that is kind of dear to what I, I'm gonna have to be doing in the future. I think New York City is the best place in the world, and to, to subdue this gun violence would be an amazing situation for the whole city, I think. With hip-hop, we're gonna touch a lot of people, like, like I've heard a lot of people say international, not only international, black people likes to hear somebody else say, we're gonna touch everybody and anybody. Power 105, one home with breakfast club, Angie Martinez, not hip-hop, but R&B, it's your main man, M-Eazy, and it's the Sunday Sit Down, and we have a serious topic this afternoon. We've got some government people in the building, some very important people. Um, Jomani Williams, I'm gonna pronounce that correctly?
Yes, you are, sir.
Uh, Lori Kumbo?
Kumbo.
Kumbo, sorry, and Vanessa Gibson?
Yes.
Yes, in the building for the Sunday Sit Down, thank you all for coming.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate you. Um, let's get right into it, what, what are you, what are you doing here? What are we doing here?
You're going with me first?
Yeah, what's up, why, why are you here?
I'm very, I'm very honored to be here, actually, now, I'm a hip-hop head, so I'm very proud to be on, on Power 105, and talk about some of the politics and some of the things that we do in the city, try to keep the sunny, the city, uh, running. And I know a lot of the listeners, uh, are some of the people, the very people that I try to make sure they have a voice in City Hall, and the interest that they have, I try my best to carry it out.
Speaking of City Hall, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I, I went by to the, uh, anti-gun violence thing that was going down for the, the, uh, at City Hall, um, that's where I think I met you at and everything else like that, so this is kind of, uh, the culmination of the situation that happened, now, what are you doing here, Ms.?
I'm also equally proud to be here, coming from Brooklyn, New York, and just being born and raised in hip-hop culture. We, as elected officials, we are part of that hip-hop age and that generation, and now we are all in city government. So it's an exciting opportunity, as Jomani said, to carry that voice through, but one of the most pressing issues that we are facing right now is gun violence. Um, and it has certainly, uh, taken our communities, um, by hold, and are really strangling the life out of our communities, and really creating an atmosphere of fear for so many. So what we want to do in the City Council, uh, to Councilmember Williams' credit, he was instrumental in his first year in creating an anti-gun violence initiative. And this anti-gun violence initiative is focusing on the communities that are most vulnerable to gun violence, but providing wraparound services, programming, support, mental health services. Uh, we're working very hard in the City Council to make sure that young people that want opportunities for summer employment, as well as year-round employment, have that opportunity. But where we met was a press conference where, from my background, I founded an art museum called Malkata in downtown Brooklyn. My goal was to see, how can we utilize the arts as a platform? Hip-hop music, visual arts, graffiti, theater, plays, instruments, how can we take all of those things and infuse that into our, uh, young people's lives, so that they can have a vehicle to channel that energy, that passion, and for many, that pain, um, through the visual arts? So that's part of the anti-gun violence initiative, is infusing the arts into that dynamic.
Okay, now, Ms. Gibson, last question, what are you doing here this afternoon?
So I too am equally, um, grateful to be here, truly a blessing, um, to Power 105. And, you know, my, my colleagues Lori, Jomani, and myself are truly a part of a wave of, you know, obviously, new leadership at City Hall. We're grateful for the opportunity to represent thousands of residents across this city, and, you know, uh, Lori and Jomani, Brooklyn, but I have to speak on behalf of my borough, the Bronx, the Boogie Down, home of hip-hop. Um, and just truly, truly recognizing that, you know, when you look at a lot of the struggle that we have and challenges we're having across the city, we have to really invest in our young people. We have to give them an opportunity to look at obstacles and turning them into opportunities. Making sure young folks understand that they're not statistics, but they're success stories. And giving them the guidance, the structure that's necessary. We have, you know, so many opportunities, uh, a lot of young people, great potential, and we really want to invest in them. It's sad to say that Lori, Jomani, and I go to too many funerals for young people. Parents should not be burying their children at the age of 14 and 16, but that's what's happening across our city. So not only do we have to be proactive in our approach through programs, through resources, jobs, and, you know, other opportunities after school, mentoring, community engagement programs, but we also have to look at policies and the anti-gun violence movement, looking at gun violence from a health perspective, looking at this holistic message of how you address gun violence from mental health, from health, from economic development, from education, from jobs. All of that has to come together, because it's not just addressing the needs of that young person, that individual, but the entire family, the entire community. So I believe the anti-gun violence, this is a movement, it's a journey, whether it's through hip-hop, whether it's through an artist's perspective, we're all working towards the same goal and the same vision. That is, to save our young people, give them an opportunity, give them a platform of positive engagement, so that we can save our young people. They are the future.
Okay, um, what do you say to my young audience, excuse me, my young audience that's saying that they're, they're getting gunned down from police officers? Where, where do you stand with that as far as the gun violence?
So obviously, we don't accept violence against anyone. Um, the violence within our communities, whether it's youth on youth violence, whether it's the excessive force used by, you know, some police officers, not the entire department, we don't accept any of that. And so we, as a council, are working with our counterparts in Albany and other stakeholders on, not only looking at policy, how do we change the discriminatory patterns of excessive use of force in minority and low-income communities? That has traditionally been police departments' practice, and not just the NYPD, but this is a national conversation around reform and criminal justice reform. Holding officers accountable for their actions, but looking at the entire department from a different lens and a different perspective. We have to work with police officers, whether we like it or not, but what we can do is change the way they behave, change the policies by which they work, but we also have to look at our communities as well. So I am outraged when an officer uses excessive force, but I'm equally as outraged when another young person decides it's okay to put a bullet in another young person. I'm equally outraged, and I think we have to make sure we channel that anger and channel that frustration in the right direction.
So, uh, I wanted to tackle that a little bit, 'cause, one, uh, just so you know, uh, Councilmember Gibson is the first black, the first female, uh, person to be chair of the Public Safety Committee, so I want to make sure we give her a shout-out. Just to back up a little bit, hip-hop was born in the Bronx, but it was raised in Brooklyn, so, make sure you say that. Uh, now, I don't want violence against anybody, and I, but I, I just want to make sure we connect the two, because uh, both of those things and the reasons they exist, I believe, are two sides of the same coin. Uh, they come from systemic problems historically in those communities, that I don't think happened by accident. So I think it's meaningful to make sure you mention that, because particularly with gun violence among our young people, sometimes they don't understand, they're not crazy, they're not stupid, um, even when the madness is going on, uh, there's a systemic problem that's going on in our community. That doesn't mean they don't need to be held responsible, you have to be held accountable for your actions. But at the same time, we have to understand why these things are happening. You put human beings in a specific situation, certain things are gonna occur. And so with the gun violence, there's two sides, you got the supply, and you got the demand. Uh, what we've been hearing now a lot is gun control, that deals with the supply of guns into the community. We want to make sure we deal with that, but we have to actually deal with the demand, which is the pension for violence. And that's some of the things you heard here, and Lori Kumbo's great addition to the crisis management system with the arts, is to try to deal with the demands and the structural shortfalls that have been going on with these communities. 'Cause we know if we give these young people the same access to opportunities that anybody else has, the violence decreases. And that's a proven thing, the biggest thing you can deal, to issue, to deal with gun violence, is a job, that has also been proven. And so one of the things I hope we can do in addition to increasing the gun violence, uh, crisis management system, is make sure that every child who applies for a job, every young person, can get one in the summer. We have about 150,000 people that apply for jobs, about 50,000 get them. So our young people want to work, but you got 100 people running around, 100,000 people now running around with nothing to do. That's a problem, uh, but all statistics show if they have a job, uh, violence, violent crime arrests uh, gets cut in half, about forty-seven percent, uh, up to six months after just an eight-week job. So we know the power that it does, and so, uh, I always push against, uh, push forward on police reform, because we have to. It is a part of better policing, uh, but the structural problems have created both of those things.
Now, can I ask you a personal question?
Sure.
You seem like a, a young brother, how did you get into, into your line of work?
Well, uh, my first love is acting, actually, I still
Really?
I'm a self-deserving, yeah.
I just, I just interviewed an actor as you guys walked out.
A word?
That's crazy, maybe after they leave, we can chop it up to
Yeah, yeah, I got my headshot.
He's still trying to get put on.
Yeah, well, my first love was acting, and that was, that's what I, that's what I did. If you, uh, if you go to one of EPMD videos, I'm actually at the beginning.
Oh, you see, you see that, you see that, okay.
Yeah, but, um, uh, so I, and I got very involved, and, um, I always was into, um, uh, social change, and so my heroes were Spider-Man, X-Men, Martin Luther King, and Malcolm X, like, those, those were all equal, I was always involved with that. And I always wanted to want to affect change, whether it's through the arts. Uh, I went to Brooklyn College and got very much involved in, um, the politics on the campus, and realized that was a electoral party is a great way to get power, to affect change. There should be, nobody should be afraid of power, that's what you do, is, is what the problem is. And so, um, when I got there, I switched my major from drama to film production, which I minored in, uh, then to political science. And it kind of just grew from there, I worked in only, I worked in nonprofits, uh, working with young people, and got involved in housing. And this was like a growth of all the work that I've been, that I'd done before.
Okay, now, a question goes out to all, all of you, how long have you been doing what you've been doing?
I've been in the City Council now for two years, but prior to that, um, I founded an art museum, like I said earlier, called the Museum of Contemporary African Diaspora and Arts. And when I came out of college, I went to Spelman and then NYU, I actually went to high school with Jomani at Brooklyn Tech. Uh, we were there around the same time, and I always loved the arts, and so I devoted my entire professional career to utilizing the arts to impact change. And one of the programs that I was most proud of was our ability to create, uh, concerts, events, programs, and art events within the Walt Whitman, Igrisol, and Farragut Houses, um, adjacent to the museum. So those were some of the programs, but I saw how important the arts are to our young people. This is like such an incredible and important outlet for them, and I wanted to take that love for the arts and not-for-profit organizations and bring that into City Council. But I also felt that that voice was missing in City Hall, and I felt like if I could be there, I could create change. And to all the listeners, I just want to say, it's so important that you recognize that you have a voice, and how so many people will say, uh, "I don't know anything about politics, politics doesn't have anything to do with me," politricks, all of these sorts of things. Politics has every single thing to do with your life. We preside over an $82 billion budget, and these three individuals right here, along with the entire body of 51 members, we control the laws in terms of that speed limit you may or may not like, we determine that. We determine everything in terms of a lot of the policies around reform with the police department that you're hearing about, what's going on in Rikers Island right now, uh, having universal pre-K, so that four-year-olds have an opportunity to go to school. All of these things are things that we decide on our everyday basis, and it's important for you to follow this so that you can support or take out of office those individuals who you feel are not upholding the ideals that you share.
I was told that, um, your, your, your local, um, what is it called? Elections are more, more important than the actual Washington presidential election, is this true?
Absolutely. Yeah, I would, I would just say briefly on that, my, growing up in my household, if you lived in my mom's house, you had to go and vote at every election, there was no that you could prioritize this one over that one. But I would say on the day-to-day, certainly. But of course, what's happening on the federal level impacts everything from the resources that we get, on the state level, the legislation that we're able to pass, it's all intricately tied. Some may touch you closer, but the challenges that we're having with NITIA, as to why so many of those repairs can't be made, in terms of why the stairwells are dark, in terms of why people are having so many issues with maintenance and repairs, those are federal issues. And so if you stay out of that, you're not gonna have an opportunity to affect something as local as your housing
I'm not gonna say that it's, uh, more important, I will say, you know, it's magnified a little bit more, uh, when it's on the local level. We want to make sure everybody comes out and votes, uh, for every one of those elections. And just to reiterate, everybody's involved in politics from the time they wake up in the morning, uh, go to school, how much they pay on the bus fare, how much they pay for their juice, uh, so saying you're not connected is kind of a misnomer. It's more like you're not, uh, you, you haven't connected yourself in a way that can really affect change in your life. But I want to make sure people really change that notion, you're involved in politics when you wake up. But I know Vanessa didn't get a chance to say how she got involved in
Well, and I would also just add too, is that, you know, 2016 is a big year for us, electing a new president of the United States, and we have to be a part of a new movement of young voters. And when I say young voters, I mean everyone under 40, because there are a lot of young people that have the ability to be a part of a new regime of elected officials in their communities, and they're not active, because they don't see the work that's done, they don't see tangible options, and, you know, people need to be educated. We talk about voter registration drives, I also say voter education drives. Because we need to educate voters on why they vote, the reason they vote, the history behind voting, so that they know when they go to the poll, that they are a part of leadership in their community. So it's equally as important to vote for local officials as well as on a nationwide. Um, so my start is, I'm a little different, I was a former state legislator, I was an assembly member also in the Bronx, and I bring a lot of state government to the City Council, I'm in my third year, uh, along with Lori. And I got an internship, that's how I started, so I'm a huge fan of internships. I'm employing young people, giving them a chance, opening a door of opportunity. It was given to me when I was at SUNY Albany getting my undergrad degree, and I applied for an internship senior year, and I got in, and I worked for a dynamic woman named Aurelia Green. She was an assemblywoman, had 20 years on the job, from the Bronx, born and bred, and I worked for her, and I didn't, I didn't realize I had a passion for helping people, I got to meet elected officials of all titles, and I was just, you know, just mystified by it. And I said, "Maybe this is something that I would like." And, you know, I, I look at my journey and the story I shared to a lot of people, and I see, didn't, never saw myself as a role model, but talking to so many people, recognizing my story is no different from theirs, and so I tell the story a lot, because I recognize that it was God working on my behalf all along, and He put people in my place to help me, to guide me, to surround me, so that I could be elevated where I am today. So my internship led to my boss hiring me, for three years, I served as her district manager. I moved from Albany to the Bronx, to the Grand Concourse, and an opportunity became available to run for her seat. She became the deputy borough president, she works with Ruben Diaz Jr., the Bronx Borough President.
Shout out to Ruben, he's been up here.
Shout out, shout out to my, my borough president, and he took Aurelia Green to his office to be deputy, and I decided to run for her seat. And at the time, I was running for the special election in 2009, I was also graduating and getting my master's degree in public administration from Baruch College. So it was a challenge, I had a 30-day window to run and graduate, and thank God I did both successfully. I graduated and I won the special election, so I look at this journey as really a blessing, and it is really a blessing to be a public servant, you have a lot of challenges, but I always believe that as long as you're in it for the right reasons, there's no challenge that you cannot meet. And there is a lot of things that we're doing that are incredible in this city, we are educating, we're empowering, and we're enriching the lives of a lot of people, and so our voices are very critical. When you look at gun violence, public housing, uh, mass incarceration of young people, um, you know, we have a lot of work to do, but I truly believe that this City Council is extremely proactive, we're progressive, and we are really making a difference in this city.
Oh, man, it's the Sunday Sit Down, it's your main man, M-Eazy, I've got Jumay, uh, Jumay? Jomani Williams, Lori Kumbo?
Kumbo.
Kumbo, I'm the, Kumbo and Vanessa Gibson in the building. Um, I have some questions, my interns, and if I don't ask these questions, they're gonna chew my head off. So let me, like I said, just coming from my interns.
Mm-hmm.
Preface, coming from the interns.
It's all good.
Because you said you were all about the interns.
That's right.
Let's get one out.
Let's get one out.
Now, um, it says here, the Daily News posted an article, landlords, brokers have been getting away with shutting down poor tenants. Speak to me about that.
Say it again.
Um, the Daily News posted an article, an article titled, landlords, brokers, landlords, brokers have been getting away with shutting down poor tenants.
Um, so I actually chair the housing and buildings, is one of my functions in, in the City Council. I'm not exactly sure what they were getting at, but I know, uh, I don't know if you can say screwed on the radio, but tenants, tenants have been getting screwed, uh, for quite some time. I actually come, the work I did before this was mostly tenant organizing, uh, and so we've done a lot of work trying to, and I ran a statewide tenant organization called Tenants and Neighbors, shout out to them. Uh, but, um, landlords and, and brokers have been doing a lot of things, uh, in neighborhoods that are gentrifying, and I know
Yes, my, my intern said something about after Sandy, seems like all, it's getting a little shaded in the coloring from the outside in.
Well, so, yeah, no, it's changed, the, the hue is definitely, uh, switching up on us over there, and people who actually, I think, stuck through, uh, the tough times are not gonna be the ones that are benefiting, uh, from the good times. And I, I think, you know, poor people like clean streets also, and so we want to make sure, uh, that the good that comes with gentrification stays. Uh, but the bad part is the displacement, and so there are folks that have been getting away with things for a long time. Comes with gentrification, stays, uh, but the bad part is the displacement, and so there are folks that have been getting away with things for a long time. We're doing what we, we're limited, uh, the Councilmember, um, Kamau, was talking about, uh, the different tiers and who's responsible for what. We're somewhat limited because of what the state, uh, can do, what we can do, but we have been doing some things, and I've, uh, I've, um, had hearings on some of these, I've actually had some bills that deal with tenant harassment, and what's called tenant relocators, uh, along with, uh, Councilmember Karadnik and Speaker Melissa Bar, Mark Farina, who's shown tremendous leadership on this, to try to, one, uh, deal with the harassment of tenants, to try to get them out. Uh, it's, it's been, uh, made now a, something that, um, you can defend in court as harassment. Um, we've made it so that, uh, people can be fined, uh, landlords will be harassing you. Uh, we've also dealt with what was called tenant relocators, quote-unquote, they would come in and try to offer money. Now that's also part of, that's a form of harassment as well. Uh, so we're doing what we can with the tools that we have, and then we're creating new tools, but these guys are very sneaky. So they, they find a way to get around the rules, and then we have to just keep up with them. Um, for those who live in rent-regularated housing, a lot of that deals with the state, uh, but we tried our best to push back on that. Our governor didn't help us out as much as he should have, uh, a couple of, a couple of months ago. But there's a lot of things going on, and, and whoever mentioned that is correct, uh, they're feeling the heat. We're trying very much to push back on that, thankfully we have a mayor and a speaker who's, uh, on our, on our side, but we do have to push, uh, a mayor a little bit on, on some of these issues also.
Let me just quickly add that every year, there are thousands of tenants that are evicted from their homes. So when you talk about homelessness and preventing homelessness, we have to keep tenants in their apartments. We, this administration, our speaker and mayor, has invested almost $60 million towards civil legal services, because we know that there's an unequal balance in housing court now. When tenants go to housing court, they go without representation. If you go with a lawyer, you're more likely to save your apartment. So we want to make sure that tenants are equipped, I am proud to co-sponsor with Councilmember Mark Levine, Intro 214, which is our universal right to counsel, because we want to make sure that tenants that are in their homes can stay there. There's a lot of unscrupulous landlords out there that harass tenants, that use, you know, baseless allegations to evict tenants. Because we have tenants who are undocumented, who are immigrants, they're fearful, they don't know where to go. So right now, if you are facing eviction or landlord harassment, you can call 311 and get access to a lawyer for free. So this is a part of the conversation Jomani is talking about, because we have to keep people in their homes, and tenants have to know that they have rights. You have a right to live in quality housing, you have a right to not be, you know, evicted or pushed out by your landlord. So civil legal services is something we're doing to make sure that we invest in a lot of tenants, so they can keep their apartments.
Got you.
It might be income limited, the, the free attorney, so, um, when you call 311, you should know that also, but definitely call.
Got you. Now, the next question, it kind of hits home for me, 'cause my, my, my wife just had a baby, well, not just, no, we're about nine months now, but, um,
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, DeBlasio just signed, uh, a bill that gives them, I guess, 12 weeks away from, from work, because I guess it was 10 or 8 before, do you think 12 weeks is enough?
Well, it was actually approved for 20,000 municipal workers, um, which is the first thing, so it's not gonna take effect with the entire city, but with those 20,000, and it's actually going to be six weeks. You can utilize the other six weeks from other vacation times, or sick leave, or other things that you might have accrued. But the challenge is, prior to that, um, across the board, the city of New York, as well as the entire nation, um, the United States is only one of four nations that does not have a paid maternity leave mandate.
That's crazy.
So you can go to other countries, particularly in Europe, um, some countries, many, have a full year of paid maternity leave. And that time is so very valuable, because it allows you an opportunity to bond with your child, it allows you an opportunity as a family for you all to become closer, but it's in that first year that so many of the developmental skills of a child are built and created. So it's important that families are able to, uh, support their child during that time, but also that they don't have to worry about if they're going to be evicted. We have one of the highest in our histories homeless problem that's happening right now in the city of New York. The vast majority of those, of the almost 60,000 people plus that are in our homeless shelters, the vast majority are children. And most families find themselves in that position between the zero, the years of zero and five. So it just goes to show that so many families in that initial year, because we all know that childcare is serious out here.
What committee do you chair?
It's very expensive, I chair the Women's Issues Committee of the City Council. So this is an issue that's really very important in terms of, it's great that it's the first 20,000, but we're also negotiating with many of the labor unions, to make sure that the next step is to make sure that the labor unions also negotiate to make sure that their workers have that particular, um, right as well. So we're moving forward in a very important way, and for many, um, women and families, this also transcends to foster care, as well as someone that's adopting a child, which was never the case before.
So what are some of the other issues that are facing women in the city?
I'm so glad that you brought that up, um, and I just want to be, because I know that time is limited. Um, when we met with Commissioner Bratton, he explained to us that almost every issue as it's related to crime has gone down in the city of New York, except for violent crime as it pertains to women. Rape is up in the city of New York, sexual assault is up, stranger rape is up, all of these issues of brutality. We heard of the woman, um, that was five months pregnant, that was killed in her home. We also understand, uh, in terms of the face slashings that have begun to happen, and most recently in Brownsville, which I wanted to talk about, um, in Brownsville, an 18-year-old girl with her father, um,
We were talking about this before you walked in, I watched on Instagram, that's crazy.
With her father, was actually raped by five, by five brutal men at gunpoint, um, with her father. And Commissioner Bratton had come out, uh, last week, prior to this incident, saying that uh, his strategy to addressing this is to encourage women to employ a buddy system, right? Now, a buddy system is sexist, a buddy system is not what women need in the city of New York. What we need is a real strategy from the Commissioner of the Police Department to tell us, what is the strategy to keep women safe? What is the strategy to stop the intimate violence that we're seeing, the stranger rape that we're seeing? In cabs now, in the city of New York, women are more vulnerable to rape than ever before.
In cabs?
In cabs.
Wow.
So this has become a very serious issue. Tomorrow morning, 10:00 AM, on the steps of City Hall, we are having a press conference to express our outrage, um, and we cannot accept as our norm, an 18-year-old being raped at gunpoint in Brownsville with her father. Because if a young woman is not safe with her father in the city of New York, then every single woman in the city of New York is now vulnerable to a vicious act of violence against them, and we can't allow that to be the case in the city of New York.
The other issue I would just add that's equally as important is domestic violence. Um, Lori and myself, we've done a lot of work around domestic violence, uh, making sure that not only domestic homicides are down, which they are, were for 2015, we're very proud of that, but also providing a lot of resources and services for DV victims and families. There are many potential victims that live in the shadows of darkness, and we really want to bring them out into the light. In particular, domestic violence in public housing accounts for a, a large percentage of the overall crime across the city. So whether it's the Family Justice Centers that we have in every borough, we are putting Safe Horizon and Sanctuary for Families in each of our precincts to work with DV officers, because we know that a lot of young, you know, women and, and men and victims themselves don't necessarily want to talk to someone in a uniform, so we want to get them employed with clinical psychologists and others that can really help a lot of these young men and women. Uh, we also want to focus on teen dating and healthy relationships, because we know in DV, a lot of that is habitual and patterned, you know, intergenerational, so I think, you know, obviously, the sexual assaults, and sexual assaults on college campuses is something else that we've been working very, very closely with CUNY, to make sure that we have a zero tolerance, and we also provide mechanisms where our young victims can come out and get the support that they need.
I think, um, I just want, I know time may be wrapping up, so I want to make sure I mention, I think what's so dope about this City Council and this mayor, is we're really trying to attack some of the structural problems that we spoke about before. Uh, parental leave is part of that, attacking that structural
That's crazy, man.
Um, it's something that you shouldn't even, I mean, it's a surprise that you don't even have the time to do this to bond with your child. We talked about the police violence before, one of the issues that has been problematic in the lower-income communities, in the black and brown communities, is that the police were the only things that were sent to those communities to deal with a whole plethora of problems, and police cannot solve all the problems in those communities. And if you send police to those communities to do that, they only have a certain amount of tools, the only tool they have is arrest and summonses. So it's going to lead to overpolicing, which is going to lead to frustrations and all the problems that we have. However, if we addressed all the structural problems and sent other agencies there, uh, the, the Division of Youth Community Development, uh, Department of Mental Health and Public Hygiene, uh, if we send HPD, Housing Preservation Development, in there along with the police, then we can solve the structural problems, uh, that are created, and I think have been created on purpose, that's for another show. Uh, but if we addressed it, um, systemically and systematically, it would greatly reduce the need to rely on policing. And I think that's what we're doing here, uh, the Fair Chance Act, which we all know what sponsors of. Uh, is a great, is a great, uh, example of that, uh, we prevented now, no one can ask the question of whether you have been, um, arrested or convicted of a crime until they've offered you a, a, a chance of employment. And that's a fantastic example of what we're doing in the City Council, to break down the barriers uh, that have been keeping people back for so long.
I think Lori mentioned it, but I want to make sure that we emphasize, um, in addition to summer youth, we created the first-ever all-year-round youth employment program, because as Jomani and Lori has said, we can't always have police respond, if we offer young people a job, they're more likely to commit less crimes and engage in positive behavior. So there are 4,000 young people right now, between 14 and 24, that are still working, and they will be working. And now, with our budget season upon us now, we will have conversations about how we expand on that. Because a job is the best social program we can ever give a young person, and it's a huge part of this conversation.
What is about that?
Amen.
Ah, listen, this was deep, I appreciate the conversation, appreciate you coming by. I appreciate the conversation. Appreciate you coming by to Sunday Sit Down. Before I let you go, this is, this is my personal issue. It may, it may have nothing to do with y'all, but taxes and tolls and the tickets I pay in New York City. These tolls, these roads, it should be Dubai out here.
You and me, you and me both.
Yeah, I'm just saying. Like I said, it may not have nothing to do with y'all. But New York City, with the tolls and tickets, come on, man.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying I get them, but those bus lane tickets are very real.
Oh, God.
Those speeding tickets are very real. They come in the mail.
Speed cameras?
The speed camera, I get, I get. I'm habitual, habitual speed camera, uh, the parking and the, uh, what's the other one? The, the, um, alternate side.
Oh, yeah, street cleaning rules.
Tell him, I, I, I paid rent and tickets to that.
Yeah, I feel you.
Crazy.
I feel you.
And this, but now that I've got that off my chest, um, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all. How can people get in contact with you? Let them know the, the emails, the Instagrams, and everything else like that.
Oh. Oh, okay, so I'll start. So you can follow me on Facebook. I'm under Vanessa L. Gibson, Councilmember Vanessa L. Gibson. Uh, my Twitter is Vanessa L. Gibson. I'm on Instagram at MissVanessa77. Um, you can send me messages. My office is thirteen seventy-seven Jerome Avenue in the Bronx, seven one eight, five eight eight, seventy-five hundred. We are more than happy to serve you. And I really want to thank you guys for having us, and I hope you'll have us back. There's so much more we can talk about, but we really appreciate the opportunity because a lot of people don't always see us and hear us, and they really need to know that there are elected officials out there that understand and that are prepared and ready to work.
Got you.
Uh, you can, I'm on Twitter, uh, at Jemani Williams, J-U-M-A-A-N-E Williams, Jemani Williams. Facebook is Jemani Williams, a councilman?
Jemani D. Williams.
Oh, Facebook, sorry.
Got you.
Uh, uh, Facebook is Jemani D. Williams, same spelling, just the middle initial D. Um, you can come to the office, forty-five seventeen Avenue D. You can call the office, uh, seven one eight, six two nine, two nine zero zero. Or Legislative Office, two one two, seven eight eight, uh, six eight six zero. Look forward to hearing from everybody. Thanks again, man. Peace.
Thank you. My Facebook is Councilmember Lori Kumbo. Uh, my Twitter handle is, uh, CMLoriKumbo. And my district office is at One Hanson Place. I always say the big clock tower building, right at the Atlantic Terminal. Um, and you can reach me at seven one eight, two six zero, ninety-one ninety-one. And it has been awesome being here, and it's really exciting for us to be able to connect with your audience because I feel that the vast majority of the work that we do are for your listeners. So it's really very important that we're able to connect to them, and thank you for providing the opportunity.
And it feels good to, to be able to look at people that look like me.
For sure.
In, in positions of, of power, knowing that you said eighty million dollars that you guys are gonna be.
Oh, sorry.
Billion.
Excuse me.
Eighty billion.
So, so that means y'all not playing the Powerball?
Hey, my man, that's our money.
Oh, okay.
But what's important about that is when they say we don't have the money, it means they don't, whatever we're asking for is not as important. When you look at somebody's budget, whatever is important is in that budget. And so that's important. Remember, we got eighty-seven billion dollars. Um, so we got money for what we need. But I don't look like your typical elected official, and that's always been very important to me. So when people look at me, they can see themselves and see what they can achieve.
Well, that's big. That's very big. Like I said, when I went to City Hall that day just to see that it was a lot of people that looked like me, the skin, same skin tone, and they talked like me, it, it felt, it felt refreshing.
And I hope that message resonates that, you know, the fact that you have three African-American councilmembers as a part of city government, that we are the community, we reflect the community. The young people that don't see their future, that don't see themselves in our seats, you absolutely can do it. The struggle is real, but the struggle can be overcome. And the fact that you have three young, yes, I still consider myself young.